Claim to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda that's presented.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Public comments. Kids got any questions?
Not yet.
Consent agenda. Motion approved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Consider mailing letters to property owners with hazardous trees.
We're gonna send, like, send two letters. One is on South Madison and the other tree is on Arkansas in a backyard. Both of them are backyard trees that clearly are diseased, they're dying, and have risk to neighbors or the neighborhood.
Is that the one that's in my backyard?
Yeah. And it's one of them.
Well, already two years ago it fell on my house.
I wasn't in this position.
Has everybody had a chance to look at it or see it? Motion to send letters?
No movement.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. The next three, A, B, and C, Chris is just gonna give us a short summary and we're gonna postpone that until the 29th.
Again, the Iowa team is just gonna give us a quick update. So, three documents that are in your packet related to the wastewater improvements, wastewater facilities improvements. Really only one of them, one of them is a loan application, SRF loan application for design. I mean, you can look at it if you want, but it doesn't have a lot of information that you'd be interested in. Another one is the IUP, again, that's a DNR thing, or anti-dag thing, not a lot of interest. But there is one that's the facilities plan, and that one you should take a good solid look at. It reviews what HRG has found and their review of five alternatives and their recommendation. The, if you've already looked at the one that's in the packet, that's fine, but we're gonna, we've got an updated version that we're gonna put in there tomorrow that's got an additional alternative and some revised numbers, so. And then Matt Wildman from HRG will be onsite on the 29th to go through this in detail with you. But we wanna make sure you have plenty of time to review it before the next meeting and have an opportunity to prepare questions for Matt. If you have any questions now, I'd be happy to take them, but Matt will do a better job.
Chris, why don't you just describe what the anti-dag and facilities plan, I mean, what those things mean?
Sure. So, the anti-dag is anti-degradation. There's a, there's a limit on what you can put into the water from, as you, the effluent from our wastewater plant as it goes into wild, or to natural streams, there's a limit on what can be put in, and we can't actually meet those limits. So, you say, hey, we're gonna come down this far, and to go any farther would be cost prohibitive, and so that's what that anti-dag, it's a relaxation of the rules on what you can put into the water, as I understand it. The facilities plan takes a look at all of our requirements that we have to meet, and then we've looked at five options, including, they are a CAGR system, LEMNA system, a rotating algae film system, and then a fairly traditional mechanical plant. And then we also looked at, hey, what if we just put a big pipe in all the way to the Fox River? And so they looked at those alternatives, and I don't wanna get into the details yet on the cost, because, like I said, they're revising those, but those are the types of solutions that they're looking at. And then they've, you know, they kinda weighed each of those and are making a recommendation. And then it goes into further detail about cost projections and how we would pay for those, so on and so forth.
Thanks. Presentation of anti-harassment calls.
You have in your packet a policy about sexual and other forms of harassment. This has been, I studied about three or four different general policy manuals, or personnel manuals. And the one I think probably best fit was the one from Oskaloosa, and this particular policy borrows heavily from Oskaloosa. It addresses the issues of what harassment is from the standpoint of state and federal law, and it really is just a reiteration, but puts more emphasis in at a local level so that there is no question as to what the requirements are as far as not participating in any harassment behavior. There's a lot of emphasis placed upon sexual harassment, which has been a major focal point on harassment issues over the last few years. And it also has a procedural section which talks about how the city would respond to any complaint. It is comparable to what you would normally find in a union contract, but this would apply for all employees regardless of their status as being a representative employee or not. I'm open to any comments or questions. The intent here is to present this policy and then bring it back at an upcoming date to actually have it formally endorsed by resolution. It also reflects probably a format of what you're gonna see for a personnel manual, employee handbook, that has been charged for us to do by March. In context, I've been getting a pretty good jump on that, and while there's a lot of work to be put into it, formatting is gonna be comparable to what you see tonight for a variety of different things. But we also have to customize a personnel manual to recognize various segments of our employees, whether they're union, whether they're non-union, whether they're in the police department. And in fact, the police department procedurals and all that kinda stuff will probably make more general references that, because the police department has its own set of rules and regulations that relates to conduct, they're very specialized to the law enforcement function. So, at any rate, there it is. Ask for any comments or anything?
Do we not have a current harassment policy or just an update?
We do not have one. We do not have a personnel manual, per se, either, which is one of the things that we're looking to do. This does not abrogate anyone from not harassing people, because, like I said before, this is a, there is federal and state law regarding this, so you have no choice but to fulfill this. But this is a reiteration and a more specific understanding that would be presented to all employees at the time of their employment. So, it's a more direct understanding of what would be required of them or not required of them to not perform harassment.
Does that include Joe Bowe off the street?
There is, there is, there is some discussion in there about someone who is acting in that regard within the context of the city's business, in that there would be, if a complaint is filed from an employee about that, that we have a process there to inform that individual not do that and remind them effectively that there are issues that are related to state and federal law that has them under some sort of, that gives them the responsibility to understand that they should not be doing that in the context of conducting city business.
I think this will be reviewed by our legal...
Yeah, absolutely. And again, I would submit to you that this has already gone through a lot of legal review in Oskaloosa, so I don't think that this is gonna be very difficult for our terms to look at and recognize its validity.
I just got a question. It doesn't have a provision for, so, sorry to put you in the hot seat, but I'm just saying there's no provision if you happen to be the, because that's city manager or immediate supervisor, so if you happen to be the immediate supervisor of those people, then who would they go to?
The immediate, if I happen to be the immediate supervisor, people would come to me. So...
I mean, if the complaint's about you, though, where do they go?
They would have to go to the city attorney, my assumption, or the city council.
And that's what I was just...
Yeah. Or the mayor.
Yeah. I mean, if it is about me, there is obviously other recourse that have to go beyond me. And my assumption is that the complaint would go directly to the way I've dealt with these in the past, the city attorney. We need to put that in there, then we'll do that.
I just was thinking that's probably, you need to have an app for everybody sometimes.
Right, right.
So, the, we've got a harassment ordinance that we do have?
We have, well, yeah, but we don't have it specified like this.
That's what I was, so will this take precedence over that?
It would be part of the personnel policy, yes it would. I mean, we would do is, we would make any adjustments to harassment ordinance by amendment, making reference to effect, this would be the policy.
That's what I was referring to, to make sure that everything's, we don't have something going against something else.
No, that's fair, but the point here is that the larger issue is that there's a policy, a policy manual that will be put together that the council would have to endorse formally through a resolution.
Anybody got any questions right now on that?
What I'll do is just bring this back in December for formal endorsement, but recognize that this is just gonna be a subset of the larger personnel manual.
Approved closure of front office on November 23rd.
We have two union employees in the front office that both prefer to have the day after Thanksgiving off. The way the contract is set up for unionized employees is that half of them get that day off and the other half get the day after Christmas off. We know that the traffic on the day after Thanksgiving is very, very low, and the preference here would be is to close down the front office on the day after Thanksgiving and have the office open in full staffing on December 26th. I fully expect that this might be an issue that the union would present to us during labor negotiations a year from now. I think that they might see the value of this, too. We do from a managerial standpoint, because half-staffs or skeleton shifts on two different days, it's not gonna be very effective, and we think that having one full day of staffing versus two half-days, or two days of half-staffing is gonna be more productive. Regardless, most offices, including the county, are closed on the day after Thanksgiving, and I think that this just kinda makes sense. I'm gonna be off that day, but a couple others that are non-union are gonna be off that day, too.
Motion to approve?
I'm moved to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. I'd like the motion to approve the appointment of Josh Patterson back to the airport commission?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion to approve claims is presented.
Moved to approve.
Discussion?
Aye.
Pose. Anybody got any public comments now?
Boy, are you guys getting off easy.
Oh, we still got reports.
Reports?
Gary?
Well, now we can formally say that the offices will be closed on the 23rd. As the mayor reflected here, we've been setting up a special meeting for this room on the 29th. We're gonna talk about, obviously, things related to HRG, and the mayor will talk about the other things that we're gonna be putting on the agenda for that night. It's gonna be a pretty filled meeting, it's gonna be a meeting where I think people are gonna spend time discussing and reviewing issues as opposed to taking formal actions. I'll be just spill the beans here, you might...
Yeah, go ahead.
The mayor, the mayor is vetoing the CIP with the understanding that he wants to revisit this from the standpoint of cost and perhaps other projects. And in our phone conversation this morning, we recognized that while we could be doing something to, if you will, tweak the CIP, the mayor says, is about 90% supportive of it, but to tweak the CIP, we have to have other things that are going into that discussion and probably come to some conclusion on the 29th. That doesn't mean that we would be able to actually have something prepared for approval via resolution, which is what was vetoed. Particularly, the concern that I have, and the mayor agreed, was is that if we make some cheap tweaks on this, we still have to figure out how to pay for it. And the idea would be is that I would get direction from the council on the 29th, put together some sort of revised financing plan if necessary, and present it to you, not the following week, because that'll be too quick, but on the 6th, on the December 20th meeting. So, that's the intent of the CIP. And then the mayor also is vetoing the electric rate increase, not the gas rate increase, but the electric rate increase. His thinking is that we oughta have a flat fee increase as opposed to a three tenths of one cent per kilowatt fee increase. And that boils down to the issue, as we discussed, whether you want to charge, and this is a tax policy thing, as much as anything, you wanna charge for access, which means everybody effectively gets the same amount of access, and the cost of that access is effectively the same, or do you wanna charge on a user basis, which some people are more advantaged if they have more use for that power, particularly in the context of major businesses who not only bring the power in, but they also make profit off of that power through the processing. So, it is a philosophical issue that you all are going to be presented with. There's no right answer here, and it depends on your perspective as to, one, the value of what would be in anybody's recognition a relatively small increase, and, two, how you want to go through that implementation, the flat fee or a per-kilowatt hour charge. So, that will be on the agenda on the 29th anyways. There is one other thing that will be on the agenda on the 29th. We have to approve a job description, and go into closed session briefly to talk about establishing a wage for the new mechanic position that we're scheduled to bring onboard in January. The mechanic position, we have a job description right now that just got finalized, couldn't make it in time for this agenda, but we'll put it on on the 29th with the hope that if we get approvals then, we will post it the next day and then allow for union members to bid on that job and then to potentially be interviewed the week following, so that if in fact we could get somebody there, then we could have them hired up and ready to go in January. If there isn't anybody, or if we don't find somebody that really meets criteria, then we would have to go out and advertise, and the expectation would be is that instead of the beginning in January, we'd probably have somebody onboard about the middle of January. But that's the other thing that we would have on this agenda. I think there's a couple other consent agenda items that the mayor presented to me tonight that are of any consequence other than reappointments, but for all the shortness of this meeting, we're gonna make up for it two weeks from now. And realize, again, you know, we got a three-week gap here, that's part of the problem, is we got a calendar issue here, so what we might get done on the 29th might lessen the load on the following December 6th meeting. I think the center point of this entire meeting is really about HRG and about the That's all I have.
Chris, Dan?
Sure. Last couple weeks been working on, actually, last week, we've had two people working on the courthouse and the lights all week, so we're helping that out, getting that going for the, and next week we'll start on the square, working on the wreaths and wrapping the poles and all that stuff next week. Street's been working on winter snow prep, basically all vehicles been in either for service or getting prepared, get the blades on, getting Sanders checked, getting all that stuff loaded and prepped for storm removal operations. Working on meter change outs, of course, receiving meters, you've seen on the claims that basically all the meters, everything's in now, it's ready to start rolling, that project starts December 3rd. We're starting supplementary change outs right now for some meters, we know we can change that, get ahead of game and make them compatible with AMI project. And then also basically just overall facility and vehicle maintenance and prep for again fall, getting ready, getting ready for, you know, stuff that can put away for the wear mugs and stuff when you get out. So, some questions?
Chris? I'm hoping that, one of the things we've been working on for the past few weeks is an updated website. I know there's not really need for one, right? No, but, sorry, I shouldn't joke like that. We're at the point where we're getting close to having it buttoned up. I'm hoping that maybe by the end of next week, early following week, we can send it out for you to begin to look at and see if you have comments or thoughts, so maybe we'll get that for you for something to do for your Thanksgiving weekend, possibly. One of the things that we've been working on, you know, we talked, we talked last time about the idea of some sort of financing program to help make homes more efficient. So, some of the ways that we've been prepping that is we've taken all of the, all of the energy consumption information for all of the homes, and we've put them into a database that calculates the, looks at the condition of the home, the square footage, the energy consumption, and it begins to put together energy use index, kinda like a miles per gallon, but for homes, right? So, you can begin to say, when we start looking at this program to go to help make homes more energy efficient, this would give us a targeted list, so we go up to the most inefficient homes first. One of the things that we've seen other communities do is publish that energy use index for all homes, so that when consumers are looking to rent or buy homes, they begin to see which homes cost more to run, right? So, we haven't done that. I wouldn't do that without talking to all of you first, but it's something that I'd like you to begin to think about and to say, is that something that we would like to do in Bloomfield? Is there an advantage to us to talk about how much energy homes use per square foot? And to, I mean, we have, for instance, we have situations where someone moves to town, they rent a home, and they think they're getting a good deal because the rental price is relatively inexpensive, and then they end up paying twice as much in the winter for heating than they are for rent. And that's a real type situation. So, this would just help consumers to know what they're getting. So, I'm just throwing it out there, if you have questions, I'd be happy to take those, but food for thought for now. Danny and I are gonna go up tomorrow to Kelowna to look at Farmers Electric Corporation and look at how they've modified their engine setup and some of their, the ways that they're tying in renewable energy to their grid. So, I, one of the things we're talking a lot about is grid modernization here in town, what assets we need to do, you know, that's something that Cadmus is also looking at, but we're trying to provide them with information and data, too, so this is just one way we're trying to get some education. Anything else? That's it, I guess.
Google training.
Oh, yeah, I'm, see, that's why I asked you. No, December 10th, Kiwi?
Yes.
From 1:00 to 4:30, we're gonna be having, offering Google training to our staff, so it would let you know how to use Gmail, Google Drive, Google Calendar, those kinds of things. It's gonna be onsite at Iowa Works in Atumal. I think there are 10 slots open that day, and so we're letting you know that if you wanna take one of those slots, there's room. There's also potentially another day, December 13th, that we'll be trying to open up, too. So, if you're interested in getting training, let us know and we'll get you on the list.
Mayor? Brenda Johnson's here, and Brenda's our accounting coordinator, and I just wanna touch with you on some of the things that are going on as far as our financial management is concerned. She's been working very hard with Datatech and Summit, the people that support our financial management structure. And it has been a very enlightening and at the same time somewhat frustrating process, given the fact that we have effectively a lot of outmoded financial practices in place that do not allow us to get the kind of data that is, should be readily accessible. And the reason for that is, is that we need to update our procedures. And Brenda's been spending a lot of time on the phone with these folks, and a culmination of a lot of this work is gonna happen on December 3rd through the 7th, when we're gonna have Summit trainers down in our offices for extensive amount of work that will help us get things squared away so that we can have data that would allow us to have a more forthright discussion about fund balances and about the transfers that we have to make in December to get the budget ready. I just wanna let you know that this is a pretty significant undertaking, in that we have budgeted for the accounting coordinator position to be a full-time job, but I tried and tried and saved money for the first few months to see if we could do it three days out of the week. We gave up on that. Brenda's now working full-time, and I expect that she will be working full-time the rest of the year, because once we get done with doing this work to get things set up for the budget, then we got budget work to do, and she's gonna be highly involved in all of those kinds of things. So, I just want you to realize that work that's being done right now is, believe it or not, very significant to how we manage and operate this city, and it probably goes unnoticed a lot, but this is, this is work that is desperately needed and has been probably, not for a few years, but perhaps even a few decades.
You can go by the click of a button instead of reading a book?
Well, it's, it's, it's if you know which button to click, and that's part of the problem here, is that I think in many respects, and this is not to disrespect anybody, but a lot of times we got garbage in, garbage out as far as data concerns, concerned. It doesn't mean that our city is, you know, mismanaging funds. If anything, what we've done is that we've been ultra-conservative. The idea here would be is that we hope, once we get this together, is that we can have some cost savings. It will help me when I deal with the banks, knowing how much we have to invest, in fact, just as a side note, I moved, was it two and a half million last week? Was two and a half million dollars into a Super Now account. Over the last six weeks, we've moved our money to effectively get us, probably on an annualized basis right now, about $60,000 of additional revenue. I think the thing to understand here is that we're still gonna go out and try to get even more through this bid process of investment. But right now, just some simple things like that is allowing us to earn some more revenue. But if we can improve upon our cash flow management structure, we could probably get more money into these accounts and simultaneously plan for their expenditures in a way that people would easily recognize. I know that a lot of times for folks up here, it's difficult to figure out exactly where all the money is coming and going from. It's difficult for me, too. I know the money is there, but it's not articulated very well through our documentation, and that's what we're trying to improve upon.
All right. Chief?
As you know, there is a car on the outside leak at the Academy, trims okay. He did get hospitalized for a while today, so how would that cover all the insurance with a claim like that, you know? Would it be on...
I think it'd be the Academy.
It should be on the Academy.
Well, probably it's during his work, it was during when he was working for the city, so it's probably both.
One or the other.
It's gonna be a situation of our attorney will contact their attorney.
They'll talk.
Also, mayor calling, we're trying to get the parking on the square kinda getting ready for winter, and so we issued a bunch of warning parking tickets last night, there's 20 some, so the timing's probably pretty good to get those, get that squared away for the year before we start doing the snow removal, all that.
Are we putting out flyers to the residents in upstairs apartments?
We haven't yet, we talked about that last... We talked about that last night, and I think we'll get, get ready to do that, too, so.
Center, our A and B, our.
That's all I got, Mayor.
Main Street?
Um, a couple things. Um, we have a new accreditation, um, guideline that we have to abide by for 2019. We have to partner with another like city, and they've teamed us up with Centerville. And what's going to happen is they're going to ten, um, select 10 folks from their, their community to come here and give a, an analysis, and we'll do the same and go over to Centerville. Just gives us some guidelines to take a look at and present and see, but we have to do this for accreditation purposes. We don't know who, we don't know when. So I just want to let you know, if you see, it's going to be sometime next spring, but we have accreditation. It's a new guideline that Main Street Iowa set up, so just to let you know that that will be happening, and I'll let you know what, what they say. Um, secondly, I, I talked a little bit to mayor, and, um, I am working very hard, as is, um, as are the other committees and, um, our Economic Vitality Group, to bring in new businesses. Um, with 20 empty buildings, it's, I think, a priority. I wanted to put some food for thought out there to you guys, to talk about package incentives, perhaps, to potential new businesses. I'm in the process right now of calling other communities to see what, see what they're doing, and I'll report back to you about that. Some of them are doing nothing. Some of them are giving a flat fee. Some of them are doing something on utilities. What I'm looking for with your help is, um, some kind of presentation package when we're looking to bring in new retail businesses, to make it, um, attractive for them to come here. Um, people don't just walk through my door on a daily basis and say, hey, let me open up a business. We're going to have to actively solicit those to, to have that, and honestly, we need something to sell. Um, how that looks is a partnership I'd like to work with you guys, and I'll bring back what information I get from the other communities, but I would like you to kind of think about it and, you know, talk about what your thoughts are and, uh, and put that together with something you're even interested in doing. Um, the push for me to do that is because of so many empty buildings. It's not like there's one or two. There's, and when I started in August, there were 22, now there's 19. That's still a lot. Um, so we have to find a way to, to, to get those things filled. Um, the, the new bakery's going to open up next week, and she is already looking at making that a permanent situation. It started off as a pop-up, but it's been going well enough, um, that she's going to be making that a permanent situation, and I think they're talking right now. Um, that's what the owner has told me. So, that's a good thing. I've also, I've got another commitment from another company that would like to come in next summer, um, for sure. So there are some things, there's several other businesses that I've been looking at, um, and with this new Economic Vitality Committee, we are going to actively go find businesses, but I just really need a little bit of help, um, in putting a package together from the city's perspective.
Send her later, send her rather than later, so that...
Well, yeah, I mean, my goal for 2019 is 12 new businesses. I know that's a lot, but we have four now, and I've got a committee with people, and, you know, I'll be reaching out to each of you, um, as well as the rest of my board to, um, continue that process. I don't think that's an unreasonable number. It's a, it's a challenging number, but I don't think it's unreasonable. But at the same time, protecting the current businesses that we have, I concern, I, I know those current processes. But I, I do need a little bit of help with that, um, from, from your side of it, as to what you feel the city's involvement should and could be, and how you'd like to see that work, and then we'll figure out a way to sell it.
I've already volunteered for the committee, so I'm already getting...
Okay. He got voluntold, so.
Well, I'd say, once you get some information, like we talked on the phone, to bring to us, so we can come up with a...
Can we do another planning session?
Come up with a plan, yeah, do another planning session and come up with a...
Centerville right now is, I called Mary, who's the executive director, Main Street there, and I did speak with her, and, you know, they're in the same position we are right now, and so she's looking for that same information. She's doing the same thing I am. And then I talked to Mount Pleasant, and, I'm not even going to tell you what they're doing, because, but they're doing a lot, but they're a lot bigger than we are. So it's going to range, and you're just going to have to kind of say, we like this part, and we like this part, and put it together in a comprehensive package. And I will come back with what I find out.
Help us to have something to kind of guideline off of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Council updates? I just want to comment just a little more on what Gary talked about with the veto deals. Um, I'd like everybody that had a question about the CIP and the electric to have that information to bring the 29th, because we have to have 100% direction on the 29th for Gary in order to get the financial part of it put together, so that we can have it done and ready for the budget. So we're allowing ourselves to relook at it, but we need to relook at it in a timely manner and get it taken care of, and get the stuff out there on the table, so that we can get the financial side of it done for the budget and have it, so he has time to do his job.
That's fair.
So that's, that's the reason I did that, and I hope, I think everybody had a few questions, and so we have a chance to get them out and get them in the open room and talk about.
I'll try and present some information about fund balance on that night, too, just to give you an understanding about what money we really have versus what might perceive this. In our conversation this morning, there's, there's, there's fund balance, and then there's dedicated fund balance that you can't touch, so there's, we got, we got some issues here to talk about in that context. And I, I just want to touch on one issue, and that is, is that there is a pretty healthy fund balance in the electric utility, but we also know, because we're talking about the Cadmus study that is going to help us plan for the expenditures of major capital improvements, there's a reason why we have a pretty big balance there. Right at the top is, is a rehab of the substation, which is not going to be a small-ticket item, to say at least. So there's reasons why some of this money is stacked up.
So that'll be, that's another reason, another information for us to have, to know what, what's, whether it's allocated for, so, you know, can we, I don't know, it won't change anything, but it just gives us a, another chance to make. I want everybody to be on board. I want all the yes votes when we're done. I want everybody to be happy. I want all of us to own it and be proud of what we're doing. So, with that, motion to adjourn. All in favor?